To order, first order business is pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, united in the principle of liberty and justice for all.
Couple of housekeeping items to go over. If you are wanting to speak, I need a speaker slip. I know that there's been questions about three minutes, whether a three-minute rule. We won't be enforcing that tonight, so take as much time. One of the things, because this is a follow-up meeting from the last one, everything that was presented in the last meeting is in record, so it's been logged as an exhibit. So what we're looking for tonight is, I know that the club and the residents have been talking or meeting and chit-chatting. So what we as a board want to hear is any kind of new, new things. So everything they have, I brought my notes, got a ton of notes from the last meeting. So if we can revisit anything that's new that you guys want to talk about would be appreciated. So we're not going through what we talked about last time. How we're going to do it is the applicant Brookside Country Club will speak first. Then the residents can have their time to ask questions or to submit new testimony. And then we'll go to the trustees, the trustees will then be able to ask our questions. We will have, be loose on being able to follow up if there was something that was presented, that somebody has a follow-up question, we'll open it up. Then the township, then the trustees will recess the private deliberations. So we're gonna kind of temporarily go out, talk amongst ourselves. And there's three things that can happen. We can come back, so if you want to stay around until we come back, I'm not sure how long that's gonna be. So we can either come back and rule in favor, disapprove, or we also have the ability, a 30-day, to be able to decide what we're gonna do. Okay? So depending on what we hear, there's those three cases that will end up, will end up doing. So Pete, anything?
Yeah, just a couple more housekeeping items. So we, I want to enter into the record, Exhibit 13, unit of photographs taken by trustee English on this site visit immediately preceding the first hearing on this matter. I have copies if anybody would like one, but this will be Exhibit 13. The other thing that I want to make for the record is that the township was able to locate a development plan for the country club based upon the initial look-alike of rezoning that occurred in 1991. So we do have on file a development plan. So I just wanted to make that clear from 1991.
But to be, but to be clear, that reflects what exists at 1991.
What was what? That is the only development plan that the township has on file.
Because I know that there was discussion last meeting about there isn't one, so how can we do something that isn't? So there is one.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, we did, you make, so I guess the question is where is it? I think we were to, back in 1991, we had big print copies. And I think we were trying to scan those in electronically. If you, if you want one, you know, you can leave, look, get ahold of Luke, you can email it to you electronically. Probably be easier than waiting.
Jesse Chaney, anything?
No.
Okay. Our fiscal officer, Michelle Elliott, is running about 10 minutes behind. So when she comes in, she'll slide in and we'll catch her up. So having said that, where's yours?
Thank you. Good evening, members of the board. I am Catherine Cunningham, was here, legal counsel for Brookside, was here at the last meeting. One thing that, one piece of evidence at the last meeting was-
Can I just interrupt real quick? Do we need to swear in?
Yes.
Me?
You don't.
No, 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 but everybody-
Everybody, sorry, I didn't want, I wanted to make sure before we started doing this. Right. No.
Make the swearing regardless.
Okay.
No.
Go ahead, sorry. I just wanted to make sure that we-
If you want to swear in the room first, I can have you-
You want me to do that? Okay, go ahead, sorry.
No worries. So I'm Catherine Cunningham, I appeared last time, I'm a legal counsel of record for the township. I just, or sorry, not for the township, sorry Pete, for the country club, the applicant. And I did want to mention just this issue of the site plan. This is one where, I know we revisited it last time. We requested a copy of the site plan from the township, the public records request some time ago. At that time, the township believed, and maybe there was a curtain, more curtain than that was, had been destroyed as part of their public records. This is the first we're hearing of a, of a site plan. So we have requested from Mr. Greggs that the township, and it will follow up if I have to chat with the administrative officer, that we be provided a copy. But until, this first we heard a hearing of it. So until now, we did not know that there was one, although we had requested here. So that's, that's sort of, wanted to get that out of the way. I also wanted to enter into the record, there was some testimony that our application incorrectly stated the height of the chain link barrier fence. And we did, not on purpose, it was inadvertently. So we all looked at it, we all put it in, and it reset 30 feet. I think there was some testimony that's 20, and we would stipulate it is 20 feet. We did not intend to mislead the board on that. If you want something written to come with the application, we will. But on the record, that chain link fence and barrier is 20 feet high, not 30, as we indicated consistently wronged in our application. And that was unintentional, we followed up on that after the hearing when there was some question about that height. So I wanted to make that clear for the record as well. And then also, we, we do have some additional testimony tonight. The Brookside Country Club president was talking about some of the conditions that the country club is willing to offer as it relates to imposition should, an approval be granted by this board. And they can sort of talk about how that came about at the last meeting. The board was very clear that they desired for the country club to try to meet with the neighbors and see if they could come to consensus. The country club did reach out and did have several meetings, primarily with the adjacent property owners. So that, that is a matter, we've got a couple of exhibits, but I think it's better if the, we call the country club president first to discuss with the board the proposed conditions. I can hand those to you as an exhibit, because you're going to be hearing him talk about that. And it was, they were also sent fairly soon to the neighbors as well who participated in those. And I'm Exhibit-
14.
14. And the applicant will go over them with the board and with the board and how they came up to, to those, to propose those to you and, and sort of what the, the thought process was about changing the, making some changes at that location. So we'll start without having the board president come up, introduce himself and speak. I'm gonna let him mostly just speak. If I have additional questions, with the board's indulgence, I will ask him. And then please ask him any questions you have.
Thank you, Catherine.
Do you have an extra copy of the four, our fiscal officer?
I do.
For Michelle.
Here, I'll take it.
Do you want to swear, thank all the attorneys in right now?
Yeah. Anybody who wants to talk.
Yeah.
Okay. Anybody who's gonna talk, if you can stand and raise your right, raise your right hand. And then Pete, do you want to?
I'm gonna try. Swear the testimony you're giving this procedure will be the truth, the full truth, not just a piece of hope you got?
I do. Okay. Thank you.
How do you turn this in?
Oh, yeah. Thank you, sir. Yes.
Talk to us, start by stating your name and giving the board some background of who you are, how you know what you know.
Okay.
What you will be testifying to and then remember.
Okay. My name is Tom Ruck. I am the president of the board at Brookside Golf and Country Club at present time. I have been a member there for approximately 15 years. I've been on the board before president for about three years. So I've been involved in most of the, at least discussions to, to where we've led here. And I've been at the last meeting and I've talked to everyone that's here tonight that's a neighbor of ours. We've had speakings with them as well. So that's where we're at.
I'm sorry, can you tell the, the board what the responsibilities of the country club board are?
I mean, the responsibilities of the country club board are to take the initiatives that were given out to the members that they voted on. And this is one of the initiatives they voted on, that they wanted to install a net for our safety, everybody's safety around the whole property. And that's what we have done at this point with some of the additional changes we have done. So we're, at this point, I am just trying to take what the members want and, and make sure that our business can thrive going forward.
Okay.
So with the Brookside Safety Net Conditions for Approval Modication Development Plan, we drew these up during the meetings we had with the neighbors. We had four separate meetings. Since the last meeting with the trusteeship here, we had four separate meetings that I've talked to people in the, in the stands here, so to speak. One is the location safety net. We have added to the safety net, so it encompasses our people, our employees as well. As you can see on the picture, I think you guys have that picture.
Yes, do they have that copy of that?
Yeah. Yeah. So you can, if you follow the yellow lines, that, that is what we are offering at this point as the new safety net. In that, we have also changed some of the parameters. And we have taken it away from the back property line where the neighborhood is, but we moved it more into our property line. So if you look at the picture, for example. Here, here that yellow one. It's the second page of that, I'm sorry. Sorry, I'm sorry, excuse me. So I figured about that, the yellow lines. Sorry. Okay. So if you look at the blue dot, if you can see the blue dots, that is to the southwest on this picture, that would be southwest. That is where the net will start in our, in our property, between the range and the, and the first fairway. And it will run up to the red dot and then angle over towards the property and then down to the additional red dot. So we have moved the, if you go up to the top right red dot, we've moved that 100 feet to the left. So we've uncovered two homes from the net. We have moved it down. So there's two additional homes that will not have net behind them at this time. At the, the, if you go to the next red dot to the left, we have moved that out to 40 feet from the property line. Originally, a year ago or so, it was where the existing fence was, which is 15 feet. Then we moved it to 30, and we've now moved that anchor point to 40 feet. We've also angled it out away from the property to the third red dot. That is approximately 80 feet from the property line. That will also 95% uncover that house as well. So we feel like we've uncovered three houses from the net being right up to the back of their property. And then obviously it comes down our property and protects our people on hole one and our crew when they, when they pick up balls or mow or anything like that. So that is the changes we've made and that we've discussed in the location of the safety net in the approved conditions. Number two, we talked about the landscaping of the safety net anchors that we will shrub and we will put around them shrubberies of landscape around each of those safety anchors. So it, it looks presentable and it's not just a wire anchor.
That's the easier here.
Correct. At the ends of those, we will have shrubberies around those.
Do those go parallel to the net or they go behind?
They go parallel. So there'll be an anchor, so i- if you want me to connect stuff-
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
And, and the residents should, should know this, I went over with at least a few of them. So there'll be an anchor here and here is what you'll see, that this, this piece here is the thing. There'll be an anchor over here, right here, and there'll be an anchor right here on this side, right here. That, it will not be netting though. It will just be guide wires. And we will shrub, we will shrub around all of these back here.
When you say, when you say shrub, what?
Landscape.
Okay, so that's-
Landscape around them.
So are we talking trees, are we talking?
Probably some type of ornamental tree, bush, arborvitae.
Yeah.
Something to hide, something with some height.
Right.
You know, not 70 feet, something with some height. So when you look out and you're looking straight at it from like eye level, you know, our height, six feet. You, you will only see shrubberies.
Okay.
Sorry, I'm gonna interrupt here, just for clarity of the record. Mr., Mr. Ruck was showing an exhibit, we're gonna have to mark that as exhibit, so it's in the record where he's showing you the lines on it as Exhibit 15. 15. And we will leave that here for the record. He was making pen marks on there, which is where he was showing you, but what we're showing here.
The red dots were the anchor points would be-
The points of where the landscaping is gonna be. And that should be part of your record, because if somebody reads it, they will have no idea about what we're talking about. I don't have extra copies of that. We'll try and get them from the township after, but thank you.
Let me ask you a real quick question, we'll take you back to number one.
Sure.
Statement says the exact placement of the net shall be determined by the net installers, could shall not purely differ from location identified in paragraph one. That, that brings me pause. I mean, if, if we're not sure of where it is and we're leaving it to some installers to decide that.
They, they-
We do a lot, we do a lot of roadwork. And so we have to be very definitive about certain things, otherwise it's not a knock on, on people that are doing the project, going to work. We need to make sure they're putting it where you tell them to put it or where it would be approved to put it.
My understanding from the contractor that will be doing this work, they will come out, take soil samples, and they will make sure that the soils are proper moisture, they're not, you know, soaking wet, which I know some of the neighbors had an issue with that. And they will come out and do all that. So they will be within feet of this. But we have also told the contractor that across this back, we don't want, like on the one end, no, no closer than 30 feet. We're willing to make sure it's no closer than 30 feet, on the other end, 40 feet. We will make sure it's no closer than 40 feet to the property line. That answer your question?
I like to be definitive.
I understand.
So how long would it take for the company to come out to soil samples?
They will be doing that when they come out, set the, the post. All same time.
So the post will be, that'll be the, the minimum. So if you're gonna, if it's gonna change-
Yes, if they change-
It's gonna come inwards, right?
We will not move it towards-
Okay.
The, the, the property line.
You'll move it away from it.
We would move it away from the property line in.
Okay.
So if he's, if he says like, for example, the drawing here, if, if it's right there, it's 40 feet, and he says, hey, this isn't good soil, we will make sure it moves somewhere inward, not towards the property line.
So we could say that in the statement, right?
Absolutely.
Yeah, no problem.
Okay.
Can amend that.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
We can put no closer than 40 feet.
Right. Okay.
And no closer than, there's 30.
The 30 feet all the way.
Better than that.
Right. Okay.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Sorry.
No, no, you're fine, you're fine. That's why I'm, I'm here to answer your questions. Number two, I think we talked about then, we'll, we'll landscape all the, the anchor points. Number three, we, we came to this consensus, we asked the neighbors, each one that was at the meeting, there was another, there, at the second meeting, there was six neighbors there. Third meeting, there was five. During the meeting where there were six, we were at the net in that area. We asked them if they wanted the existing net to stay or come down. All but one said they would like it removed. So, and so we said we would remove it, just based on majority. So, so that's where that, that comes in. In, in doing that, we also said that we would maintain the property between the new net and the property line. We would mow it, we would make sure it was grassed. We, we could even possibly put some landscape in there, potential, some smaller trees back along the property line. We discussed that with the neighbors as well. Number four is the maintenance, it goes into the maintenance of the property line on the north side. We, we told them that we would absolutely maintain the property up to the property line at that point. Number five, talked about the lighting of the driving range. We are in no shape, form, manner, at any time, gonna ever light the driving range for operational use. Currently, there is a downlight on the driving range. We spoke to them about it. It would, they thought, some of the people thought it was, they could see it, it was a little too up. And we took care of that already. And we've emailed them and we took care of that. So we will not be adding any more lighting for operational use. That, that's not what we're there for, we're daytime golf, we're not night golf. And then the hitting bar. We also told them that, and we will absolutely do this, we will move the hitting bar. I can show you where it is in the picture, if you'd like me to, again. Is right, this is the hidden bar with the, with the, yeah. It is, it is potentially, it's planning to move right, right back here, 30 yards. You got, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. We agree that that will be done. It won't be done the same time the net is, is installed. There will be a, a second phase as we develop the driving range, the hitting area. We're gonna redevelop the hitting area, add additional hitting space to the back. So we will move that at that time.
Those are an estimated timeframe.
I would say probably within the next 18 months.
You say that?
Yeah, is that okay?
18 to 24 months?
Yeah, yeah, no more, I think no more 24.
Okay.
We, we plan to, to do that.
Okay.
So in this project, you know, we've injected about another $120,000 into this project to, to get it to, to go for the safety of not just only the neighbors, but our own people.
Right.
So I wanted to bring that up. As far as the four meetings, I just touched high level there. We, we had, the first meeting was with just one of the neighbors. We drove them around the golf course so they could see the limited space we had and, and understand, we wanted them to understand that there was no other place to put the driving range. And I think that we agree on that, I, I believe so, from my understanding. Bless you.
Excuse me.
The second meeting we had, we called another meeting on September 8th. There were six residents there. All five that are here tonight were at that meeting, plus one additional resident that was there. And that's when we started talking about what we could do and, and, and change and what they wanted to see or what they didn't want. And that's how we came up, came up with this, this, this project at the end. In that meeting, the one resident that is not here tonight, she is okay with the project. She has no problem with it. She also, the next day, she, she picks up balls in her backyard. She had three bags of balls in her backyard that she said we could come over and pick up, and we did.
Todd, can you identify who that was?
Uh, yes. I think her name is Ed in Rosen Tail, I don't know how to-
Can you look at your map and?
Oh, yeah, I could, I could show you where, where she lives. She lives right, uh, she lives right here. She lives right here. She would be the first house covered up by the net on this side.
Okay, so I'm gonna hand you a map.
Okay.
Maybe you can, this is the map with the front door application.
Yeah, this might make sense, sorry.
And I'll, I'll hand this out to the board, mark it as in the script, right here. Shouldn't you want this somewhere, I'm not even able to hear it.
Yeah.
Sure.
She had brought to me three bags of balls.
You're, you're gonna have to point to her.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just have to be able to hear.
You, here.
Well, the mark is still an exhibit.
That's fine.
That would be Exhibit 16.
But 16?
I see 15, maybe.
15?
That's what you were drawing on earlier.
Yeah, yeah.
The big one right there. That one?
Yeah, yes. So like I said, we, she, she invited us over, we picked up ball, we sent an employee over, we picked up balls from her house the next day, there's three, there are bags full of them that she picked up out of her yard.
I'm sorry, Todd, did you indicate on Exhibit 16, which, what number her lot was?
Yes, I, I put, I guess.
Record, can you say what that was?
Uh, it was lot number 13. All right, September 10th, we held another meeting. Five of the property owners adjacent to the Brookside Range showed up along with Max and Matt Elliott and myself. And Catherine was there, who we asked Catherine to leave shortly after the meeting started. Sorry.
It's all right.
It's still like you, don't worry.
It's not about that, it's-
It was, yeah. So we just talked about the changes some more at that point of what we were wanting to offer, what they maybe wanted after, you know, because after he sets in for a night, everybody has new ideas. So we just wanted to come back to the table, see if there's any additional information for, for any of the, the people. I went around and personally asked each resident that was there, directly to them, if with these changes, would they be willing to like sign off and, and like tell the parish township trustees if they were okay with the net. At that point, four of the five, I believe, and, and Max and Matt were there, would be tolerant of the net at that point. There was one that was a no. But they also weren't gonna sign off because they don't want to leave their neighbors hanging.
Right.
Which is fine, I mean, this is a neighborhood, right? That's what's, that's what it's all about. The neighbors had a few questions about the poles themselves. Has there been any of the broken? Could we get some additional information on the color of the netting? We did that, I emailed that to them. I've done about three emails to them since, since these meetings. We answered those questions to them.
Same black netting you brought last time?
Yeah, it's the same black netting, it's the only color they do. It's the only color they do. I, I told the group, I would, I would email them this information that we turned in tonight. We sent that to them yesterday. I, I emailed that to them personally. And then there was another, we held one more meeting, and it was just, again, just one additional person. We invited two people- We invited two people. It had to do with the forty-foot post. We wanted to, we went out and staked the new design and wanted to show them, you know, where the forty-foot was and make sure they understood that. So that was just a five-minute meeting between me and one of the neighbors. At the end of the day, you know, we added additional netting for our property, for our members, for our crew, for the other neighbors, you know, about a hundred and twenty grand. We moved the net away from three houses, at least uncovered them across the back and moved it left, and then we angled it out on the one end. We will maintain the property. That's not an issue. The curb fence would come down. And we said, as long as the majority of the group wanted it, we would do plantings around the anchors, you know, no lighting. And then the hitting bar will move at some point when we redo the hitting area of the range to move towards where the netting is focusing at this point. You know, we believe that we have done our due diligence. In good faith, everything the Perry Township has asked us to do in this project, going clear back to over a year ago, I believe, when this started. You know, and we're just trying to move our business forward. We're not trying to, you know, we're trying to protect the neighbors. We're not trying to put them in a bad spot or anything like that. We're just trying to move us forward.
Can I ask you one more question?
Absolutely.
You just wanna pop up here. So I think I know the answer. These, these anchors, right?
Yes.
Obviously, that's like to keep tension there, right?
Yes.
So does that, like, the one that's gonna be here, will that angle out this way, like thirty?
It'll come twenty-five feet this way.
This is twenty-five to thirty-five?
And we talked to the contractor and told him if we could do twenty-five, we would do twenty-five.
So and it comes twenty-five feet this way then too, right?
Yes, yes.
You're gonna ask a clarifier.
You could mark it on exhibit fourteen.
Which one's fourteen?
This one right here. Fifteen, sorry, here it is, fifteen. So that you can have.
I just wanted to be able to understand.
This way. It's in, it's in, it's in a straight line. There are straight lines.
Use this one, I'll mark.
So it extends out twenty-five feet for each one?
Yes, and this, this angled netting will only be here, which is in the middle of our property and here at the end of this one. These two down here, there's no additional netting like that. It's just the wires.
Oh, okay.
Just wires down here.
So I'm gonna do.
When you say wires, are you saying aerial wires or?
They're just guy wires. So they're gonna be guy wires and on the ends, there'll be the netting, but in the.
Why don't you just make like a one and a two there? So we know, those will be the two points. Make a one with a circle around it. And a two. And then for the record, that'll be the two areas where the anchors will be and extend twenty-five feet out.
With twenty-five feet in that, and they go, they go parallel, straight out from the fence.
And there's no angle on the other two.
The bottom of the U.
No, they will go straight out.
Okay.
Straight out in line with the fence. This piece here.
Oh, so there's gonna be four anchors then?
Yes, but only two will have netting and two will be guideline only.
This will be netting, this will be netting, these are guy, these are guys.
You know, so it just goes, I'm surprised they need it on a shorter piece like that. You would, I would think they would go this way.
I think it's just the ends. The contractor said they do this any long straight, the turning runs.
Okay.
That's what he said.
All right, so three and four, right, three and four, point three and four would have no net.
Yes.
Okay.
Todd, can you write on there, three and four and a net?
Idea, idea, idea.
Thank you.
Yep.
There's no net.
Um.
Two anchors. He said there's four anchors, he said six anchors if I remember.
Yeah, there's four anchors.
We're not gonna take questions from the audience.
So there's four anchors, two anchors with nets, netting, and two with just guide wires.
And when you're talking about the two anchors with netting, are we talking about the anchor at the far southwest corner closest to the club between the fairways?
Yes, back to us.
Other end is there's netting on the far, where, on the far.
It'd be to the eastern, northeast side of our property.
Okay.
Where that pole is, or that, you know, that.
That clarifies at least in my mind where everything is.
Sure, here.
And I didn't appreciate there were two, I thought there was netting on both of those. It's just on the, on the two ends.
Yes, yes.
And for clarity, how many anchors are there altogether?
There are four anchors altogether, two that will have a sail-shaped net down the guide wires as shown in that picture right there. And then there'll be two anchors.
We just have that.
Yes, yes, just the wire, the net will run down. The other two will only be guide wires. And those are the two at the, where it comes together, like at the angle.
Okay.
I think that's all I have for now.
There, I have a question. For the record, you said, when you were talking about who met, Max is, who is Max?
Oh, Max Rees, our general manager, sorry. So Max and I were at meetings one, two, and three. Matt Elliott joined us for number three.
And what's Matt Elliott's?
Matt Elliott is the secretary treasurer of the board.
And what was the first meeting date you?
Yes, I have right here. It is. First meeting date was August twenty-fifth. Second meeting date was September eighth. The third meeting date was September tenth. And then the final one was September sixteenth.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
We might have, but I don't.
I think we're good for now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else from the?
Not at this time. Thank you. Well, we would like to reserve the right for rebuttal.
Yeah. Okay, we're gonna open up for resident, and the first speaker slip that I have is Mary Rose.
Do I get to ask them questions or do I just go to speak?
You can speak and ask questions.
Questions, okay. I'm gonna start my questions for Brookside. I'm just curious, what restrictions does Don Scott place on the height of your fence and were any other dimensions?
Yeah, I assume you wanna, we can, we'll put a witness up to respond.
Correct. We need to identify somebody who is spotting on behalf of another country club. Yeah, okay. Yeah, but do you, you wanna?
You wanna take them all and then?
I was thinking we would just.
You wanna?
Oh, you want, yes, all questions, okay.
Whatever she asks.
Okay. Yeah, the other question was for you, Bob, man. Last hearing, you objected to Matt Wagner speaking about precedences, that there weren't any precedents precedents for such a fence in central Ohio or even Ohio. Why did you object to that? That was another question. And then the other question is to the trustees. I think you should see their whole plan before approving this. I mean, they have plans on the driving range side about expanding it and moving it back, we were told. And I would think you should see the whole picture. Or just what they choose to share at this meeting, because they do have other plans they talked about. Okay, I do have slides. Yeah, that's good. That's my first one. I'm not gonna refer. Yeah, very good.
For copies of these.
Okay, oh, yeah, and I have hard copies for you. That's right. Thank you for mentioning hard copies. Okay, so I have a couple articles to share with you. I've got free copies. Okay, so here we go. Okay, so my husband, real brief introduction, we both have doctoral degrees in horticulture, which is the science and art of growing plants. We purchased our property for its natural beauty and its potential for gardening. This explains in part why we are opposed to a large unsightly structure in very close proximity to our backyard. And I'll come back to another key objection in a moment. Okay, so Brookside just made a presentation and mentioned meetings with the neighbors. We were never officially invited to any meeting. We never got a letter, email, any kind of notification we heard through Matt or neighbor. In at least a couple of those meetings, they talked about, I think, were strictly with Matt. There were actually two meetings, my husband attended one and I attended the other. So we met with, I met with them on September eighth. And as far as I was concerned, no compromise was offered, but they had indeed changed their plans. They told us that the linear fence was now going to be a three-sided structure to provide some protection for the first hole. The tee area would be enlarged and moved back, but not as I saw it for our benefit. They weren't gonna move back the tees and then give us any distance from the structure. So bottom line is I would see more unsightly seventy-foot poles with the new three-sided structure. And the landscaping they're talking about, my problem is the height, okay, the height and the proximity, proximity, not a, you know, ten-foot shrub even isn't gonna make any difference to me. The other thing is I asked them directly, could they push the fence farther from a property line? They said no. The first modification plan was thirty feet from a property line. What they presented tonight is absolutely no difference. Once again, it's about height and proximity. Due to the massive side of this fence, I ask that the seventy-foot fence be built no closer than seventy feet to my property line and electrical wires as was suggested in the first hearing by my neighbor, Matt Wagner. This would still be well behind the flags on the range where the golfers are supposed to be hitting their balls. Now I'm gonna share with you why I think you should consider this. First, I challenged the bases for their trajectories and assumptions that were presented at the first hearing. Those trajectories came from a for-profit company that wants to sell them a fence, not an independent consulting engineer. The dimensions of the fence were based on assumptions about how far and how high people hit balls with no research presented to back them up. Okay, even if those assumptions were correct, consider their assertion that a safety net, and that's what they wanna call it, is necessary. Brookside's golf pro stated in that hearing that the proposed fence would contain eighty-five percent of the golfer's balls when the tees were forward. What about the other fifteen percent? He stated that when the tees were forward, fifteen percent of the golfers would have to flight their driver down or not hit a driver. Who's gonna enforce that? Furthermore, how can they claim that the fence will increase safety if potentially fifteen percent of the golfers can hit over it? Doesn't the safety argument fall apart here? Wouldn't it be a better solution to move the tees back so that the golfers don't pose that risk? By the way, the current twenty-foot fence is no more porous than what they're describing for this seventy-foot fence where fifteen percent of the people can hit over it. Brookside has other options than putting a seventy-foot fence within thirty feet of my property, which was the original plan presented in March. Move both the tees and the proposed fence. Okay, I wanna make it clear, I'm not objecting to the seventy-foot fence as long as it's not thirty feet from my property line. Move both, move them back and move the tees back. If necessary, remove some parking spaces. Use the restricted flight range balls. That might be another option, which was up there, but he couldn't read it. There's restricted range balls. I do have a handout in front of you. The article there indicates that most ranges use restricted flight balls. They're talking about ten to fifteen percent restriction. I had in the slide there an example of a top flight ball, which actually restricts like thirty percent. Also, if they build a three-sided fence, they could reorient the balls inward towards their course. The bottom line to me is that it seems fair that the course should absorb most of the negative consequences of building a seventy-foot fence instead of inflicting them on the neighbors. Speaking of negative consequences, I'd like to share some research on how landscape factors affect property values. The first research paper in your hand concludes that landscape plants and curb appeal attract buyers to a home. I suggest that a negative landscape feature would do the opposite. The second research paper quantifies curb appeal suggesting that it can make a difference of seventeen percent in home value. Since the fence would be more than twice the height of our home, it would certainly be visible from our curb.
For the board, sorry, I don't mean to interrupt, but I just have to object. So all of these, these articles and information is all hearsay. And in this book, technically, in a hearing, so I just wanna get that for the record. Understand, it's her testimony that she's reading an article that says this. But I just, thank you. That's all I need. Thank you.
We let in, obviously, hearsay from your client on what neighbors said and all that kind of stuff.
Two of the papers are published research in respected journals. Okay, the third one is an article in a popular press. It is a study surveying twelve hundred and fifty licensed US real estates and specifically addresses hardscape features, which are the non-living features of a landscape such as fences. Forty percent of real estate agents said that the poor hardscaping has a very negative impact on home value, while thirty-eight percent said that it was a somewhat negative value. Overall, the survey suggested that poor landscaping can decrease property value as much as thirty percent. Here I have to point out that a six-story high fence would be a very negative and unescapable feature of our landscape, visible from the curb. Our house and property are a substantial proportion of our net worth. When I retire in six or seven years, we'll sell. Consider trustees whether it is fair to inflict a loss of up to thirty percent in property value on retirees. Also, consider your own township zoning resolution that states modification plans should be compatible in use and appearance with the surrounding landscape features in keeping with existing land use character. This is the same township that requires that I keep my trash cans out of sight. Okay, we're talking about a seventy-foot fence. Where is the equity here? All we ask is that a seventy-foot fence be kept seventy feet away from my property line so that it recedes somewhat instead of overshadowing my backyard. Previous testimony made the point that CCC created much of their own problem by moving the tees consistently forward over time. Please don't make the neighbors bear the price of fixing their problem. Thank you. We shake some time.
Thank you. You guys want to respond to the question?
Oh, sure. Get back up. Yeah. Are you a Realtor?
I'm not a Realtor.
Are you in Fraser?
I'm a horticulturist.
Thank you. And your property is, is adjacent to the golf course, is that right?
Absolutely.
And in your backyard, you've got gardens and landscaping all the way up to the curb fence, is that right? What's the point? Is it yes or no?
It doesn't matter whether it's up to the point. What I'm interested in is what I can see up here when I walk out my window.
You need to answer a question, so you have to.
Okay, do I have to answer the question?
Yes.
Okay, I'm not sure what she's ambling at here. Yeah, we have landscaping up to the fence, annual flowers, nothing permanent.
Okay. And do you, is, from your property, when you look out, is the golf course visible, given the landscaping that you've planted and all that is the golf course? when you look out, is the golf course, course visible, given the landscaping that you've planted and all that, is the golf course visible?
Not really.
Do you see the fence?
Definitely see the fence.
The, the twenty foot existing fence, you see that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And, um, in terms of the.
Okay, add one thing. I mean, when those pine trees are there, we didn't see out at all. Those small trees.
Okay. Um. And when did you buy the house?
Nineteen ninety-four.
And at the time you bought the house, was the fence, uh, the, the chain link fence there?
It was.
Okay, and at the time you bought the property, I assume it was a working golf course next door too?
Mm-hmm.
Um, I don't have any further questions, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Not going to answer the questions?
I'm sorry?
Shouldn't I answer this question?
Yeah. So were you guys gonna, you were gonna answer, yeah? Beth?
Yeah.
Yes. Are you the one who's thinking to this question?
No, I can't.
Okay.
They're knowledgeable. And I, I'm sitting there.
The, the three questions?
Yeah.
The first question, I think that, that, um, the witness asked was, what are there, are, are you aware of any airport height restrictions and what are they?
Yes, Don Scott has a restriction of seventy-five feet. So.
And, um, the second question is about why I object, which I'm not going to answer. And the third question was, um, I think about Landmark's National Driving Range?
Take the whole picture, I think, from what I wrote down here, the whole.
So, so the, so phase two of this is to, we are going to move the drive range back and take some of our own parking lot out. That, that is the plan.
Yeah, but yeah, do you know how far that's going to be?
Uh, we're going to go an additional approximately, it's about thirty feet to thirty-five feet back from where it is now.
Does that materially change, if you know, any of like the calculations before, about fifteen percent? Ca- this captures eight, eighty-five percent of the ball?
Correct. I, I mean, I, I don't, I mean, I, I, I have my opinions, but they're just my opinions. I don't have any factual information about if we moved thirty feet farther back, other than it's ten yards or fifteen yards roughly, that's what we're moving back.
Real quick on the location of the tees.
Mm-hmm.
I think there was some testimony from the witness that, uh, the tees have moved much closer over time. Do you know, do you know anything about that?
Since I've been there, two thousand and ten, the, the range has not changed. The hitting area has not changed, but I can only go back to what I remember to cover me personally.
So let me ask you a question. If you're, you're moving the driving range tee boxes back thirty feet, you're going to take some of your parking.
Yep.
Could you not move as part of an overall project? Could you not move that net even further than what you're proposing?
Well, the reason we're, the reason we're coming back in our parking lot is we want more turf area to hit. So we want the hitting area to be larger. If you look at our range, uh, it, it, it gets so much use that if we run out of turf.
Okay.
If, if the, that makes sense. So that's why we're going to add additional, we're probably adding about thirty percent more space to our hitting, but it's all coming backwards at this point.
One more quick question I have. I think this was brought up in our last meeting. Has the range always been at this location for the club?
As far as I know, and I've talked to people that have been there, I mean, there's a couple of guys that were there since kids and they're seventy years old now. And, and they say it's been there. That's where it's been. I mean, that goes back.
I mean, I can't imagine anyplace else where it would be, but.
It, it won't fit anywhere else. There's nowhere it would fit, so I don't, you know. But, but again, I, I can only go back so far, but I have talked to.
Okay. All I have.
Todd, can you talk to us a little bit about the, what you call where you tee off?
The hitting, the hitting area?
The hitting area. Where the tees are during the season, do those spots move around within that zone?
Yes, so every probably other day, we, we move them back or, or forward, depending on where, where it is in the thing, approximately five feet. Um, so there, there's fresh turf. And then we move back and, and, you know, every other day we're moving back. So it's rotating. And for several years, you know, we, we've tried to be as neighborly as possible and tell people to hit left towards number one, which is why we're putting the fence up over there on the left. Because the range becomes much shorter. If you look to the northeast, the range does become shorter than to the northwest.
General business operations of the golf club to, to move those tees?
Y- yes.
And why is that necessary?
So the, the, the turf can regenerate. As we move around, it can grow, has new growth, and then we can go back to that spot several weeks later.
And if you weren't doing that, what would happen?
I mean, the range would be unusable. I mean, you'd be hitting on dirt.
Um, and let's talk about the trajectory study for a minute. Are you familiar with the trajectory study?
I am.
And when the, the net was established at seventy feet at its location, I think we had some testimony on that. Why was it put there and at that height?
It, it, well, it was originally, we wanted it to be higher. And then in talking with Don Scott, we thought, yeah, I mean, we would go down to seventy feet. And then we said, for seventy feet, what is the distance that can do most effective? And, and that's where they came up with the yardages and we thought be most effective. I mean, I don't think any net or anything's a hun- ever a hundred percent.
And if you move that net closer, does it change the trajectory?
Yes, if you move the net, if we move the net closer than the forty feet at the one end, um, then it, it just have diminishing returns.
So will more, more.
More golf balls have the potential to go over the net at that point as you move it closer.
The closer it comes.
Mm-hmm.
So where it is, is the maximum you felt you could go back.
Yes.
And contain the maximum amount of balls.
Yes.
In the golf course.
That is correct.
I don't have any further questions.
You're, you're increasing the hidden area because? Why?
We need more turf, more grass.
And it's because the grass is not regenerating fast enough for you? Or is it because you want to have more tournaments coming in or?
Uh, both. I mean, we'd like to have more tournaments.
Yeah.
Um, eventually, not, not many. I mean, uh, you know, one a year probably, but, but it's for our own members, really. We, we chew up the turf extremely fast. And I mean, we just have a lot more members. In nineteen, you know, ninety, we had two hundred and fifty members. Now we have five hundred plus that are hitting golf balls.
For the, for the record, Mrs. Rose, uh, her supplemental will be marked as exhibit seventeen.
Do I get to rebut that?
Now, we're, we'll what you're what are you rebutting?
What they just said in response, I mean, it was supposed to be the.
Yeah. Yeah.
Come on up.
Basically, my rebuttal to that is that why does their problem have to cost me? Totally, they don't want to take anything on themselves. They want a hundred percent their way. They're going to back up the tees. They're going to get more space, but they still want the net thirty feet from a property. Compromise, let's have a compromise.
I hear thirty feet.
That's forty.
It's forty feet, right?
No, it's a mid.
On the one end. Well, the, 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 the bar northeast will be thirty feet. The northwest will be forty. Then it angles up to eighty and then comes down into our property.
Got you.
And, and forty foot is directly behind your house.
Right, so it's forty feet behind, so property line forty feet net?
Yes.
Okay.
I just read on it, it said it will be a minimum, on that piece of paper said it will be a minimum of a thirty. And of course, I'm pushing for seventy, pushing for the height of the fence, distance away from my property, so that it somewhat recedes and it's a distance. I think it's fair. She put that distance away from the property line because at even forty feet, that's about where those pine trees were. Um, it's going to loom over our backyard. That's my rebuttal.
Thank you.
Um.
I, I was just going to question the lack of the development plan, but it sounds like that's been resolved since.
Yeah.
All of that, it'd be nice to see a copy of that.
If, if you call and we will send it to you.
I just give them a list of everybody who wants a copy.
I'm sorry, what's your policy?
Allsorac.
C, um.
Is it spelled?
V A L. V E.
C E R.
R's.
V A K.
C A.
Common spelling.
I used to know.
Uh, Matt?
See it here.
Yeah, you, you. Yeah. And, and just state your name.
Yeah, Matthew Wagner.
Okay.
Um, I, I just wanted to thank you guys for, uh, uh, you know, thinking about this for several months. I appreciate it. Still, that my resident, you know, the residents on Merwin showed up, that was really nice. And, you know, they did, you know, the, the, the golf course has changed some of the, uh, orientation of the course. And it does make me feel a little bit guilty because some of it behind my house will be less observable. Um, so, but I feel bad for the other residents on Merwin that, uh, will have that same, that same belief. Um, one thing I did want to say is, um, we talked about that hitting area and how it's changed at the last meeting, the initial meeting. Um, if you remember, up until two thousand and two-ish, there was a ten foot metal fence there that had been placed sometime in the seventies, um, behind many of the houses. Um, in two thousand and two, the Brookside came and asked for that fence to be made up to twenty feet. They wanted to remove the old fence and put in a twenty foot fence. So somewhere around two thousand and two, if you look at Google Earth Maps, you'll see that the change, that, that the tee boxes changed in two thousand and two. They put up the fence and then the tee boxes moved forward. And you can use the, the current, um, the current landmarks. There's a little hitting green right next to the tee boxes on the left-hand side. And you can see in, in one year's time, they moved it forward. So right after they put in the green fence is when they moved the tee boxes forward. I just wanted to, because the way it sounded is that this fence has been there for longer than that and it hasn't, two thousand and two. Um, I did have a question that I brought up the last time we were here was how did the fence change in two thousand and two? Was it a modification of a development plan? Did it go to zoning? Did zone, they go to the zoning commission, say, you know, we want to increase this to twenty feet. We want to get a variance. Or was it just a handshake between Brookside and the residents in the neighborhood? I, I didn't get that question answered the last time, so I'd like to know how that occurred, just for my own notification. Um, and, you know, now that the, the fence is, you know, now that the fence is moving towards a possibility, what if, um, if you go to Topgolf, there's always those golfers that want to see if they can hit it under the fence. So say that now there's ten or fifteen percent of balls that occasionally get over the fence. What type of relief do residents, uh, that live on Merwin have for those golf balls that are going to have a higher velocity, a higher trajectory, um, if they, if they're able to go over that fence? But right now, the balls that end up in my yard are dribblers. They usually land right at the range or at the end of the range and they dribble into my backyard. Um, this, if people don't have the, uh, aren't asked to hold back on the way they're hitting the ball, will that, will that worse, you know, will it be more of a target is a concern that I have. Um, and the last thing I was going to say is I, I did hire a, the last time we had this meeting, I did not have the time to hire an attorney. I did hire an attorney, she's here with me today, and she's done a little bit of research that I'd like to be entered, um, into the record. Any questions that I need to answer for you guys? Any questions for you guys?
I'll just say, response to your question, I don't know the answer to your question.
Okay.
So, I mean, I don't know if, if Ms. Cunningham has this counsel for the country club, but I don't, I don't have the answer to that.
Okay.
To which question?
That how the fence in two thousand and two went to twenty feet?
Yeah. I would say, I don't have, I, I didn't know, I would, we would have, I would have had to have somebody historically with the club here to answer that question. I don't. The, the two witnesses that I have don't have that historic information.
Okay.
Um, I, I want to ask, when did you buy your house and move in?
Two thousand and one, January two thousand and one.
Okay. And, um.
I'm sorry, two thousand and two. Uh, just over four and a half years.
Okay. So when you bought your, your house four and a half years ago, and what you're saying that there was a ten foot metal fence in two thousand and two?
Correct.
And you based that information on what?
Uh, two things, neighborhood residents that lived in the neighborhood that were there when they, the fence. And then Google Earth Maps actually shows a distinct change in the line that occurred in two thousand and two.
Okay.
And that's why, and that's one of the reasons I wanted to confirm with some type of peritanship document. This was put into this date.
Um, and then when you say that the, uh, you believe that there will be more balls hit over, I think, is what you were saying, or at a higher trajectory and rate, do you have any, uh, background or training or information to support that, that's what you anticipate?
I, I went to Topgolf once.
Okay.
And I saw what people do with golf balls at Topgolf.
Okay, do you know how high the Topgolf fence is?
Yeah, I do, it's a hundred and fifty, two hundred and ten feet. But you see the, you see a different reaction to people when there's a target like that.
Right, and those people are not on the ground, right? They're elevated on a platform.
Some of them are.
And it's in a way different environment.
Some of them are, I'm not clear with that.
All right, thank you. I have nothing further.
You, uh, Mr. Wagner, you said you had some documents you wanted submitted into the record?
Uh, no, I didn't.
Boy, you hired your attorney.
Attorney's. Yeah, my attorney.
Oh, okay. Okay, so.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I got one quick follow-up. You, you could sit down, Matt.
Okay, thanks.
On these, uh, I was going to ask this to, uh, uh, earlier, uh, to, I think, to, to Todd. Do you guys use restricted flight balls at all in the range?
The rainy balls we have currently are about eighty-five to ninety percent. So they're restricted around ten to fifteen percent. And, and that's a lot, most ranges are like that in, in the golf world. It, once you start to be more restricted than that, then practice becomes more difficult because you really don't know what, where the ball is going.
Where a real ball will go.
Yes, yes.
So that, that changed?
Yeah, no, they, they tend still to use the same ball, the, the same. But then, then we've had those balls for, for a long time. I mean, that's a pretty typical range ball. I mean, unless you're a, unless, like the PGA, they're not using it, they're using real golf balls.
Okay.
That, that is the, the case.
Good question.
Excuse me, I apologize first because once you have about three lawyers in the room, people start to get very nervous and a law enforcement officer.
Well, you actually have four, so.
Oh, my. Well.
I'm not nervous.
Well, you're not. I do have somebody, so I have a copy for each of you. And then, um, Ms. Cunningham, I can give you a copy as well, just so you know what I'm referring to.
So.
You minded by and this is, um, they said the eighteen?
No, not at all. Sure.
Keep it simple.
Absolutely, they're, um, it's A through, A through B, so you'll have to remember from there.
Thank you.
But Matt contacted me, I, I think the residents have done a pretty good job of making not only logical, but emotional arguments and addressing the facts and the circumstances. But he was kind of like, is there, is there anything else here that we can present? And when I look at your plan, in Exhibit A, I have a copy of your regulations, just so you have something to reference in front of you, some of you may have them already. But six forty zero three six is where the modification comes into play and the criteria for accepting the modification. And if you look at one, three, four, five, eight, and nine, I want to address those. Those speak to being consistent with the purpose, the criteria, the intent, the standards, keeping with existing land use and physical development potential being compatible. Some of the residents had mentioned those. But it also talks about in number five, being adequately served by essential public facilities, including drainage structures. But it also talks about in number five, being adequately served by essential public facilities, including drainage structures, and being compatible with any adjacent residential areas. So I am wondering if you turn to Exhibit B. Exhibit B is a copy of your zoning map. And Exhibit C is a blow-up of that map. This golf course is in the flood ring. It's in the floodway. And to date, I don't see that anything has been presented with respect to any approval for development in the floodway. You can't, you can't develop in a floodway, not without the planning commission being involved, not without the planning commission approving. And in fact, you need an H and H study to develop in the floodway so that they can ensure that the neighbors are not going to be subject to any kind of flooding. The neighbors have already had pooling issues. And I wonder if that's because there's already a fence in the floodway, and I don't know if that ever went through the permitting process. But you just can't do it without more.
Can I ask you?
Yeah, sure.
You say planning commission. County Planning Commission?
Franklin County Planning Commission.
Yes, never come before my commission.
I'm sorry?
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Okay. The, the Franklin County Planning Commission, or you might have a separate?
No, it's a Franklin County Plan.
Okay.
Yeah.
It does permit any kind of changes in the floodway or the flood zone, anything that might affect it in any way, anything that might increase flooding for other areas. So for example, you can't just put a bunch of fill in the floodway because that's gonna flood all of those areas outside of that. And so typically, you have to conduct an H and H study with, excuse me, which is a hydraulic. You might know better than I do, a hydraulic and hydroponic or something like that. It's a very scientific term. To ensure that whatever you're gonna do, the anchors, the shrubs, whatever's gonna be put in this place is not gonna cause more water concerns for the residents. And I, I don't see that any of that has been done to date. So the floodway is a really significant issue, and I want to address that concern about, is this a fence? Is this an accessory structure? When the golf course originally put in its variance application, they called it a fence. There was no uncertainty about that, but now it's a safety barrier or possibly an accessory structure, and it has to be something. And then number two of their proposal, it says the code has no established development or design standards that apply to driving range accessory structures, including golf ball barriers, but you absolutely do. It's six forty oh four, and it says that your development and design standards come from section five. Section five says that when you have a fence, it can't go in the floodway. Period. No H and H study, no planning commission. It just can't go there, and this is a fence. Your zoning regulations define a fence as any structure composed of wood, metal, stone, plastic, or other natural and permanent material erected in such a manner and positioned as to enclose or partially enclose any lot or part of any lot. In fact, your zoning regulations also say that it's only structures that have a purely ornamental purpose that aren't considered a fence. You include a trellis in that definition. You include open fences, partially open fences, um, solid fences. And you even include a wall as a fence. So solid fence represents a wall is included in the definition of a fence. Ohio law refers to netted deer fences, although there are very, very few references to fences in Ohio law because typically that is a zoning commission issue. Um, but Merriam-Webster defines it as just a means of protection or a barrier intended to prevent escape or intrusion. This is a partition. It's a barrier. It's intended to prevent the escape of golf balls. It is a fence by your very definition. And because it's a fence, they cannot build anything in the floodway, but they cannot put it in the floodway. It's also seventy feet instead of six feet. That's a big leap. You guys have already heard plenty about that, so I won't go into that. But even if you consider it an accessory structure, it's way more than fourteen feet that you allow for an accessory structure. And your zoning code indicates that the location of accessory structures shall comply with the Franklin County Board of Health or the EPA regulations, and I haven't seen any of that information. So you are permitted to consider other factors in addition to just those listed in the regulations. And we would ask you to consider the fact that this is not something that the residents want. They, they've been more than vocal about that. You guys know that. But they, they built their home on a golf course, or they bought their home on a golf course for the view, and this is ruining the view. And I, I understand Brookside's position, athletic golfers and increased range. But maybe that makes this not so feasible anymore. If you can't put the golf course in an area where your golfers can hit the ball without knocking it into somebody's house or constructing a ginormous fence, maybe that means this just not is, is not a good solution for them anymore. And for those reasons, and because we do maintain that this is a fence, we ask you to listen to your constituents and to your neighbors. They're here in numbers today. They've written letters. They voiced their opinion. And we understand Brookside is one of them as well, but they're just one, and these are many. And they're asking you to listen to them, and we ask that you deny this petition.
There you go.
What specifically are you citing that you can't put a fence in a floodway?
If you look at your, let's probably get in Exhibit, give me just a seven.
It's in the six forties, right?
It's actually in the five. So in the zoning district that we're in, the exceptional use zoning district, in that last section, it says that you have to refer to section five for development and design standards. And when you look at exception, section, section five, five point oh two, point oh three, regulations, fences, walls, hedges, no fence, and number one, no fence, wall, sprinkle or system hedge, or other landscaping plantings or materials shall be located. And then if you go down to the bottom, located with any easement, floodway, floodplain, drainage easement, or a parent drainage course for any parcel or subdivision. So it's that first sentence that basically says no fence may be located in a floodway.
So, so what, what body of water are we talking about that's a floodway?
It's actually on your zoning map. So when you refer to your zoning map, which is Exhibit B and C, which may change numbers here. If you look at the large zoning map, it's difficult to tell, but something that is surrounded in a pink border, which is on the far right-hand side at the bottom, that's actually a floodway. And if you go to Exhibit C, you'll see from the blow-off area or from the area that's been zoomed in, that there is a pink boundary around that entire golf course.
Because the way I'm reading on the zoning map is that this hash is exceptional use district. And the pink boundary is Perry Township unincorporated.
I'm seeing a, a pink square down at the bottom as floodway.
As I see the floodway on the old tangy, but I do not see, and I see the flood under your floodplain on the old tangy, but I do not see, because then all of these, everything between the old tangy and the country club would be floodplain or floodway, which I, I find that hard to believe that that's, that's a floodway.
Well, I can tell you the neighbors have had flooding in their backyard, Mr. Wagner.
Well, I understand that there may be dips in the topography, but when we're talking a floodway, that's usually attached to, um, it's usually attached to a jurisdictional stream. And I don't see any jurisdictional streams that, um, are in there. And usually, they're very defined boundary. Um, so I guess that's what I, I'm trying to understand is when you say we can't be in a floodway or a floodplain, it's usually attached to, um, a perennial stream or something like that that floods.
I understand completely.
So, I understand that they have drainage issues back there, but I don't, I, that would not constitute a floodway or floodplain.
Just based on your, your map, that's what I'm seeing. Maybe that needs some clarification.
Right.
Maybe, maybe your position is that it does not, but the way that I was reading your map, the pink rectangular areas were in a floodway.
Yeah, because I'm reading it as, I'm reading it as exceptional use district, which it is.
I think, isn't exceptional use district? I'm sorry, my math is very tiny from here. But I, I would say that maybe needs some extra clarification to ensure that not only is it in comport with those regulations, but also the EPA regulations and the health district regulations, if this is to be construed as an accessory structure. And then we still do rely on that position of this is just not in accordance with any of the standards of the neighborhood, the intent or purpose of the code. Um, and this is something that we don't believe is permitted under these regulations.
Questions, okay. Okay. Thank you. Okay, you got these in Exhibit?
Yeah, that's eighteen.
Okay.
And we'll just, um, mark them, eighteen, A, B, C, D.
A. Mr. O'Keefe?
I, I might not yet. Testify as much. The, is that correct? There is a development plan? Yeah. Yeah, so that was gonna be the biggest piece of my testimony was, I, I would like to get a copy. I will. I, I've done it for it, so I'll definitely reach out.
The, the other housekeeper, you came a little bit late, right?
Yes. Did you swear in? No, I didn't.
Oh, okay.
So the testimony you're giving, Mr. Preseason, will be the whole and true.
I do not care. I apologize.
Oh, you're fine.
Now, the, the one other thing outside the development I wanted to look at was the, um, it was more of a question for golf course. Um, since the last meeting, I did come across that the golf balls were gonna be changing in a couple, no, a couple of years. There's gonna be a reduction in the balls. And I know that they use a ninety percent reduction ball, but in a couple of years, the ball they use on the, they're gonna be reduced even further than what they use playing. And so I know there's technology for the balls that are at forty percent. So I was wondering if that was something that they would consider. I know they mentioned that, that's kind of the feel for it. And I, and maybe I mispronounced your testimony that, you know, the feel for it. But maybe that if they were to, if the balls are gonna change in two years by the professionals, you know, maybe if they use a reduction ball, I'll let them do it.
Have you, so what, so your question is?
The, the balls themselves, the, the balls that you use out of your bag, you go on the course, they're gonna be reduced. But USGA is forcing the manufactured balls to reduce the, the power, the power of the balls in two years.
Okay.
I have, I have not heard that. Yeah. I'm not saying it is true. I just, I haven't heard that. It's the USGA. There is, and I, and I, after this meeting, it is, they are reducing the strength of the balls by, by certain, because the, the strength of the golfers, like the technology. And, and that's why we're here. We're at, I mean, the golf, the golf clubs.
The technology.
Technology has advanced.
Right.
Right. And what I'm getting at is, if that's the case, if they're gonna reduce the power of these balls, then they're building a solution that's gonna be solved in two years.
Okay.
That's what I'm getting at.
Got it. Okay. Anybody? Um, that was my last speaker slip. Okay, um, I'm gonna open up trustee questions, uh, based on, I know that we've been asking. But, um, I got one that has been plaguing me as both a golfer and a, um, and we got a bunch of attorneys here, so it should be, it should be clear. Who, who's, if I hit a golf ball and I hit somebody, or I create property damage, who is responsible for any kind of damage or injury that would occur due to me hitting a ball and, and it, the fight?
I would call insurance cows as your, as your tax attorney, so, but I, I.
I mean, this is, like, again, I, I mean, I should probably know this as well, but I don't know.
I, that is a question for a jury, but I can tell you what I do know.
That's not a question of fact. That's a question of laws.
Maybe. Because part of the issue is when you build a house on a golf course, it might say it's an attractive nuisance, and that you're subject to, that the property owner will, may have some responsibility for that themselves, based on the location of their home. They may not, the country club will, would certainly get sued too, but it is a question of fact. Um, in terms of where the property sits and how that is, I have asked that, that question to many. Um, and what the answer is always, everybody will get.
But is there a case law that would say that somebody sues somebody because I got hit or whatever, that the case law would?
Probably fact dependent.
Very fact dependent.
Okay.
The golf course was there, all, everybody, every house next to that golf course was built after the golf course was there, everyone.
Right.
So, okay, that is a fact.
Right.
How a jury would weigh that fact would may, may determine the issue of liability. So it's not, I, I can't clearly say, I don't think. Everybody, every lawyer I've asked also says the same thing. I can't clearly say it's too fact.
So, so this goes to my next question, and it's one that's like, so if the neighbors are saying we don't want a fence, and you guys are saying, hey, we want the fence for safety, save yourself a couple hundred thousand dollars and just fire away, and the balls go into the backyard. So again, it comes down to, if I'm on the, if I'm on the range and I hit the shot I've always wanted to hit, and it lands in the neighbor's yard, strikes somebody.
Which has happened.
Am, am I liable for that? Because I'm a member of the club.
Of liability.
Right.
There's a potential of liability.
Some share.
I, I don't, I didn't disagree with anything that Ms. Cunningham said. I think it could actually potentially also be the golfer based on case law. It could be the golf course. It could be the homeowner, depending on the risk. But let's say, this is not Brookside's situation, but let's say they had a driving range aimed at the residents, and then they took away their distance-decreasing balls and moved it up three hundred feet, and now it's hitting.
I'm just saying, like, as it stands today. So I get up there, I strike a ball, you know, like, hey, we heard that the residents are okay. They don't want to look at this thing, so we're not gonna build it. But you know what? Um, um, golf people, go ahead and, and hit it. And I mean, on the short side, go. I mean, that's what I hear. So.
You can't do that.
Why? Why can't I do that? Why can't I say that?
Different. I don't want to like, going with my, whatever, thirty-eight years of background on, on, on these kind of issues. Everybody knows, everybody else, you know, a, a reasonable man standard. You, this is different than like hitting an errand shot that, oh, I sliced this one.
Right. Okay.
You are shooting directly, directly at somebody's houses.
Right.
Knowing you could go into their property, and you, you can't just say, well, hey, I'm, I'm bulletproof and, and, and I'm gonna take down the net, and, but I just, you can't do that.
I think you also, a proponent shouldn't be disadvantaged by enforcing their own legal rights. So if they say, okay, this isn't the fourth of the main code, but you can't use that against them later. If they said, well, okay, we just don't want it, and that was their only argument, then, then maybe. But you can't disadvantage them for using their legal rights, if that makes any sense.
So, yeah.
Yeah.
But I still think if somebody got hit in the backyard here, they could probably make a claim because by your own testimony, fifteen percent of balls are gonna, this is gonna allow fifteen percent of balls to go in there, so you know that's a, that's a risk that you're willing to live.
As opposed to the hundreds that already are going in there.
Right. But, you know.
Yeah.
If somebody does get hit, I mean, you're, you're limited by the height because of dog's gut.
Yes.
You know, I suppose maybe a hundred foot would be a hundred percent affected. If you had it much closer before the ball gets to the apex of its thing, you're gonna, you can, you can stop all balls from going. You're, you're kind of hitting into a giant net. You're not, you can't, you can't hit over it and carry, you know, whatever, fifty or a hundred feet behind that. Um, so, you know.
That's why a trajectory study was conducted.
Right. But, um, at the, at the end of the day, you know, within driving, you can't, you can't just, just let it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just adding, I'm just asking a question. It's not like I'm.
You're planning on improving your game significantly in the next.
That's a lost cause, Michelle. It's a lost cause. Um, okay. Um, that was my, and it's still being unanswered, so. The search continues. The search for truth continues. Yeah, it depends. All right. Um, I, that was my, my biggest, oh, uh, I got one other one. So back to Mr. Chaney's comment about, um, making sure that we. So back to Mr. Chaney's comment about making sure that we have exact placement and not leaving it up. So being a landscape architect. I look at the landscaping and shrubs and say that is very, very vague. Like shrubs is, and I understand what shrubs could mean, the one person could be in a trade, another person. How do we? How do we understand? What shrubs or other similar landscape means?
You're going to have to define it, Max. I'm going to tell you.
And being a landscape architect, I react to plants. And, and, and potentially elevations. Like, like, here's what, like shrubs and landscape can mean a thousand different things.
Yeah.
So. Come on up, Max. Come on up, Max.
You talk about what certainly what was discussed in.
He did.
Band up the last time. Did you? Go ahead and say what you meant.
I do.
Please, again, state your name for the record and position.
Max Re, General Manager of Brookside Golf. If this is approved, we, we have a discussion with the neighbors. Our Superintendent Director of Grounds has a prior, is aware of the neighbors, has talked to neighbors, has a history. Address concerns. So our discussion with him is once we see the anchors, once we know what it is, we can talk to all of these folks. Say, what would you like to put there? And, and see if we can't come to something there. Right now, again, we're, we're looking at a green backstop that has weeds on both sides of it. Ours, neighbors, et cetera. So we're just saying, we're going to improve that. We, we, we don't have a specific plan. We, we, we aren't sure we're even going to be able to do this.
But not, not, not to interrupt you, Max. That's really, really.
It is vague.
It is vague. And so I think what we would need is something, and Andy can help. I mean, the guide is in this conversation. I think you're going to need at least kind of a, a type of plant.
Okay.
A size of plant that you would be considered. If you had, listen, here are five plans that we would be in consideration of. If this is approved, there'll be one of the five. We'll work with our superintendent. We'll work with the neighbors. We'll put, here, here's an idea. Here's a, here's the universe in which we're operating.
Well, the, the only thing, I mean, I think we not put you on the spot and say, hey, we, we need to know tonight what you're going to do. What I would say is in the record, we're saying that you, based on the, and again, I'm, I'm just trying to close the gap on this condition that you agreed. That a landscape plan that is, that has been worked with, with the neighbors or a thing will be, I'm, I'm trying to be, leave it, not been to react to the conditions that would or would not be presented with the guidelines. That makes sense.
I, I'm following you. And all I can say, all the discussions we've had with, with the team that would do the landscaping, our grounds department, is we will make it look nice. Do whatever you want. That, that's the reason the offer was to leave the existing barrier where it is. So that the view would not change at all.
Well, and that's, and, and that's another thing where, you know, I kind of look at it as like that green barrier. Like there are. There are lots of landscape treatments that would grow up that fence and create a green wall. You know, whether that's palpable or palpable to the, to the group. You know, like I, I'm saying it could be a benefit. If the green fence was thing, and then you plant it with, you know, some sort of evergreen climbing vine and just let it in, totally take over that fence. You know, you know, and it basically is another layer. That's another thing that.
I don't disagree with that. That is why the original.
All, all I'm saying is this is very vague right now, but I'm trying to figure out how do we tighten that up?
If the board were to approve it, there's, we can type that language. Satisfactory.
I was just going to say, once it's approved, we'll. If it's approved, excuse me.
Right.
We would come up with a plan. I just. If, if, if you look at other areas, member of Paul for trees, we tried. These folks clearly have hit off hot button with our existing dance that's disarrayed now back there that's on my side, so.
Okay.
In fact, the neighbors didn't want the, I think I heard a testimony earlier that.
A majority, a majority wants the fence taken out.
That's correct.
All right.
So we, we were trying not to disturb anything on the backside that thought that would be.
I don't have any other questions.
Jack, is this in, I'm not, I'm asking, not knowing the answer. Is this the kind of thing we're talking about, an evergreen type situation where you don't want to see those all year round? So was that discussed?
Our Director of Grounds said, whatever the neighbors would like, within reason, we'll listen to.
And did you discuss it with the neighbors? Any discussion about what that?
Only what we've done in the last month and said that we would do it. What would you like? If you want a landscape, see what it looks like, one gets it in.
If this gets approved, we, we have no problem bringing a landscape plan to the trustees and they can look at it proven. If you don't like it, then we'll do something else. I mean, I'm confident.
Could we make it, could we make, we make, if, if we were still, we make the approval contingent of buying and a screw over landscape plans?
Referring, I, I would suggest for permanent, I don't know if the board was here or if you just want staff approval.
We, we, like I said, we, we can type that up.
Okay. And again, I just, I, I just, you know, if they, if these six things were discussed with the neighbors. And again, you know, just, I just want to make sure that we're crystal clear that there's no vagueness. And so that answers my question.
Yeah, we have no problem putting a plan together. I just don't know what exactly, like today, what. Yeah, how, how big do we want to go around? I mean, I mean, once the anchors are in, no issue at all. We'll bring a plan back. You guys can approve it. They can approve it. I, I've got no issue with that. At all, zero.
And that's just specific to being around.
The anchors.
The anchors, not the length of the fence.
Yeah, correct.
Those trees are taken down previously, right? So that's still an issue in terms of, so weren't there trees there before?
There were some, there were three, three or four trees. We looked at the holes.
All right, hey, all right, we're not, we're not.
He wasn't turning his, turning his player.
All right, so.
The anchors.
Any, any other questions? I'm, I'm talking about the trustees. Any, any questions? Okay. Thanks. I'm going to allow one question and then we're going to.
Catherine, was, did you want, you reserved in bottle? Did you want?
I, I want to say something. He's still not, I'm all my slides going to get in back. Kind of get them, get my slides back. It's totally shut down.
So which one, which?
Well, okay, so you know what? The thing you have in the back is fights. Okay, so you're talking about landscaping. You're a landscape architect. I'm a horticulturist. That fence, seventy foot tall, that's the comparison to the thirty foot. We'd all be dead before landscaping pants would cover that fence. So they offered us landscaping as, nobody really said, oh, well, can we have landscaping to make this pretty? They offered it as sort of lipstick on a pig.
Well, in, in there, in the thing, they say shrubs or similar landscaping shall be planted around each pole ground acre or anchor. So my question is, in the four meetings that you had, when was that discussed?
The anchors?
Yeah, the land, like, how did this, how did this make it to the, to the list? And do you guys recall what meeting landscaping and that everybody was like, yeah, that makes sense?
I think it would have been meetings two and three. So one on the eighth, I believe it was. We were out by the existing fence and then the tents when we were in the ball.
Wait, we're, so, so you think between eight and ten? And is that your last, is that your comment?
I was there the eighth and they said, maybe we could do some landscaping, but it wasn't like the neighbor said this is the solution. I mean, the landscaping.
The lands, I just want to, the landscaping we're talking about involves the four anchor points, right?
Yeah.
And, and only. And only two of those anchor points have the net. The other ones are just a wire.
Correct.
Okay.
And where the cables go into the ground, we will encompass that area with landscaping.
So you're only talking probably a diameter of like six, eight.
I'm going to say ten feet.
Yeah, ten feet.
I'm guessing, I, I, yeah.
It just, because, you know, keep people away, then that wire is kind of like a, a buck.
Correct, correct.
And, and only one of those would be. Only one of those would be along the.
The north border?
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay. So we're really, we'll deal with kind of one pole.
Correct, one, one interval.
Right, okay.
Okay. Any other questions?
Before Catherine go, Amy, is there anything else you want to add? Okay.
No, appreciate it.
Do you care? I just, I just, I was going to email the Mr. Pelosi that article from the USO.
Local.
For Chelsea.
That's all right.
Yeah, okay, great. Catherine, go ahead.
It's, that's okay. We've been trying to convert it for a long time. It's good. It's almost there.
Just wanted to thank the board for their consideration. For urging the, the golf club to work with the neighbors. I think that that was a positive thing. Obviously, they didn't all come to consensus on anything. And we understand that. We outlined our position and our response to most of the, the points that were raised by legal counsel in terms of going through the standards and how we felt we met them. Both in the letter to the trustees, which is required by your code. And we also put them in the, the, all of the criteria that we were looking at in the standards for the application, which the board has before it. So I don't want to go over all of that. You have that before you. I do want to say that we are not, I am not aware and, and I share as a board skepticism that this isn't a floodplain or a floodway. I'm very familiar with floodplains and floodways. We deal with them all the time. And there is no stream around that I'm aware of. There is a drainage ditch in the back that there's been some complaints about in a couple of low lying areas near the, near the net, which the club is looking at, but I, I'm not aware that's in a floodplain or a floodway. And I'd be amazed, frankly, if it were. So I, that's a question of fact that's to me unanswered. That, that there's floodway maps and floodplain maps and insurance associated with all those, which I'm sure you all know. And I'm not aware of any of that that apply to this, this site. I also want to make it, we, we have argued this from the beginning, and that is that this is, this golf club has been there a long time. Long before houses, long before many other things in this area. It was zoned EU when the township first adopted its zoning. And part of EU is specifically for golf clubs. And for accessory uses and accessory structures associated with golf clubs. Golf clubs do have driving ranges. That's a very typical and normal part of every golf club. And this is a golf club who has one and is asking you to allow them to modernize and stay competitive in the marketplace as they are growing with their membership, as they want to continue their viability in the township. These are all neighbors, no disrespect to any of them, who bought houses on a golf course and like the view. But, you know, your, your view is what your property is and what happens next door when it's a golf course. There is some risk that when you're next to a driving range, that there may be changes associated with that range in the normal course of the business operations of the golf club. And that's what Brookside Country Club is trying to do here, is they are trying to remain viable, remain relative, relevant, and remain still one of the top five golf clubs in central Ohio. Some would say more than that, but, but attracting great tournaments and pro-am golf tournaments. And in order to, to keep that, they have to change with the times like every golf club is. We hear all of these golf clubs saying they need, you know, longer fairways. They need with, with all the changes of technology, and this is a club who's trying to step up and remain competitive and remain viable and still be as sensitive as they can to the neighborhood that they are in. And one of the positive things I would say that has happened from this is at least they're communicating with the neighbors. They're sharing information and emails, and that is an improvement, I think, over, over the past relationship. And that is a tribute to the trustees in, in terms of trying to get them to collaborate and cooperate. And they have done that to the extent that they are able to. And still advance their own interests in, in terms of remaining viable in the township. The. I disagree with, with the characterization that, that the golf course does not meet so many of the provisions of the code. Because in terms of, again, we went through it with the letter. I don't want to go through it again with the board. But all of the things that were talked about in terms of the, the various standards for the modification of the use that are in the code. We believe are met. We've outlined, I might outline those, but the design features aren't just design features for the neighbors. They're also design features for this longstanding golf club that's there. And it is the golf club's desire to, to be able to, they, they. You know, they talk about a compatible use. Well, they're, they're compatible uses next to each other forever. They've been there since before the houses, that their, the houses were built as a compatible use to the golf course. And the golf course remains a compatible use to them. They're just trying to maintain their viability in the marketplace today and change it with the times. We appreciate your time and attention. I think the golf club continues, will continue to try to work with the township and the neighbors. We believe that we meet all of the standards of the code and respectfully request that you approve their request. The golf club is, is, has introduced these conditions to give the board an idea of, of what they're willing to do to do what they believe was a compromise to neighbors' concerns. And we request that you approve it. Happy to agree to the conditions that have been submitted. Understand that, you know, we want to be sure that that one anchor point is not any closer than forty feet. I think the thirty feet one already says that in the, in the text, but we just missed that on the forty. And we're happy to meet the other, other amendments that we discussed. So happy to answer any questions. Appreciate the board's attention. And respectfully requesting approval with the conditions we provided. Well, that did.
Can I ask you, Pete, one question? I know we're going to have deliberations, but as a condition of the category in which they're in, it does talk about a development plan. Does it reference a development plan, an updated development plan or a nine? Thirty year old development?
Conditions? No. There's no mention of an updated development.
But that could be a condition to have an updated development plan.
Yeah.
I would, from my perspective.
I don't, we're good. We're good. Thank you.
Object to that because.
You can object all you want.
I understand. I understand, but I, we, we explored this with the township. It's the township's obligation to have the development plan, which they did when they rezoned.
And, and you're obligated as a property owner to have an updated development plan as well, readily available. I mean, responsibility goes both ways.
We. Have, I, I don't know who submitted the development plan. To my knowledge, I understand what you're saying. I don't believe that's the way the law is written or the code is written. When you bring in a zoning from the county, make it part of your own, rezone our property EU and have to do so with a development plan. That's what, that's what happened with this site. It was, it was a non-conforming use in the county. It came in in county zoning. The township brought it in in an EU use, which required a development.
You were already in the township, but go ahead.
That's true. They, we were in the township who did not have zoning, was subject to county zoning. The township chose its own zoning, brought it in under its own zoning. That zoning required a development plan. We requested a development plan. We didn't ask to be part of that. That was the township's view to, to do that. So we can debate it all day long, but my view of the world is the law does not require us to do that. I understand that you're saying that you want a condition to do that. And I'll, I'll talk to them, but that's, that's a, that can be an expensive proposition for somebody who has an existing use that is permitted.
But the nineteen ninety one development plan you would have to contend does not reflect her condition.
I mean, I've never seen it. I've requested it from the township before. And, and.
Let's go hypothetically.
Let's, let's leave the development plan. We'll talk.
But hypothetically, since, okay, we'll talk about this. If it doesn't reflect today's positioning of structures and infrastructure. If it doesn't reflect today's positioning of structures and infrastructure and all that, then it would be outdated, obviously, or be dated to the nineteen ninety-one position. Correct. I mean, I know you wanna see it, you're entitled to see it, you're entitled to get a copy, just like everybody else.
Right, I, I, I.
You're, you know, and you're, and I would, I would contend that you're also responsible to actually have it, but you know, we could argue that all day long too. Who's responsible, property owner to have it?
The regulator.
And the regulator.
Not the property owners, the regu- certainly the regulators.
We could argue that one all day long, but you're asking for something, and so.
I understand.
I get it.
I understand. Anyway, that's our position.
So, yeah, I'm gonna close the public comment. Um, I'm also going to move to recess into private deliberations to consider the merits of the application by roll call vote.
Mr. English?
Yes.
Mr. Roper?
Yes.
Mr. Chaney?
Yes.
So, we're not sure how long this is gonna be, but we'll end up coming back, um, and, and, um, we will close, um, close that meeting, and so we gotta go back and kinda talk. So.
But we may not reach a decision tonight.
Yeah.
You're right, yeah. I, I, I just don't think it would be worth a while for folks to sit around expecting us to come back at eight thirty or something.
I think it was a decision.
Let's, yeah, let's, we can talk about it.
Yeah.